Ladies and gentlemen, could we please stand for a pledge to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To the record, this is a public meeting of the Bayonne Board of Education. It is 7:33 PM, the 20th day of June. We're convening in the Anna J. Herbert Meeting Room. The presiding officer is Joseph Broderick, President of the Bayonne Board of Education. Those in attendance include Dr. Michael A. Wonko, Superintendent of Schools; Mr. Kenneth Kopas, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel; Dr. Gary Maida, Board Secretary; Mr. Thomas Figu, Jr., our acting School Business Administrator; Dr. Dennis Degnan, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction; and Mr. Mitchell Pescual, Board Counsel. The meeting is open to the public. I will take a roll call. Trustee Alonzo is absent. Trustee Casillas?
Here.
Trustee Cruden?
Here.
Trustee Finerty?
Here.
Trustee Munoz is absent. Trustee Ryan?
Here.
Trustee Velado?
Here.
Vice President Willbeck?
Here.
President Broderick?
Here. For the record, adequate written advance notice of at least 48 hours giving the time, date, and location of this meeting with the agenda as provided as follows. Notice was prominently posted in City Hall at 6:30 AM UC on the bulletin board reserved for such announcements of the Board of Education. The Board Secretary sent such notice to the Jersey Journal and the Bayonne Community News. Notice was filed with the Municipal Clerk of the City of Bayonne, Mr. Robert F. Solone. Thank you.
So at this time, we'll start with our agenda, our approval of minutes, our acceptance of communications. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Motion by trustee Cruden, and a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Velado on that motion, and second trustee Alonzo is absent, trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz is absent. Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
We have some commendations for this evening. I'd like to read into the record. We'll start with, whereas Bayonne High School student Elizabeth Hannah was awarded first place in the Colonel Anthony K. Pabelski Holocaust Memorial Writing Contest for her poem "An Honest Business," whereas Bayonne High School student Elizabeth worked hard to develop an outstanding piece of poetry, "An Honest Business," to honor the victims of the Holocaust while also combating Holocaust denial, hatred, and ignorance. Whereas Bayonne High School student Elizabeth Hannah proudly represented our school community by reading her poem at the annual Yom Hashan Commemoration at City Hall, whereas the Board of Education wishes to recognize the dedications and accomplishments of Elizabeth, be it hereby resolved that this Board of Education sincerely congratulates Elizabeth, and this is by the Committee of the Whole. Elizabeth, would you please come up? And also, Mr. Ward. Mr. Ward, would you please come up? Anyone else? Absolutely. Mr. Woods?
No, anyone else will read what we know. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That's best.
Good job. Put the picture on.
Beth, have a seat. Have a seat.
Okay. Whereas Bayonne High School student Georgie Alexanian, a student in Mr. Woods' course Facing History in Ourselves, was invited to be a guest reader at Kane University's Yom Hashan Ceremony on May 1st, 2019. Whereas Bayonne High School student Georgie proudly represented our school community in the city of Bayonne by reading Psalm 23, whereas Bayonne High School student Georgie has dedicated his time and a portion of his academic career to bearing witness to the horrors of the Holocaust and to genocide while also working to combat hatred and ignorance. Whereas the Board of Education wishes to recognize the dedication and accomplishments of Georgie, be it further resolved that this Board of Education sincerely congratulates Georgie, and this is by the Committee of the Whole. Please come on up.
Congratulations.
Okay, next up, whereas 4th grade student Parnika Argwall has brought honor and distinction to Horace Mann Community School and the entire community by having received a lot of first places, received first place in the American Legion Coloring Contest. It's the 100 Years of the American Legion. She also brought honor and distinction to Horace Mann and to the entire community as one of 32 finalists in the Partnership for a Drug-Free New Jersey Contest where she created a folder based on the theme "Fun Things to Do Instead of Drugs." She went above and beyond by spending countless hours perfecting her two projects for the American Legion and the Partnership for a Drug-Free New Jersey. Whereas her American Legion artwork included four photos of branches of the military and a nurse, and the drug-free folder included artwork of children playing basketball, reading, listening to music. She attended an awards ceremony at Jenkinson's Aquarium in Point Pleasant in May of 2019 where she received a laminated poster of her artwork. She also won first place for the Horace Mann Community School in the Hudson County Improvement Authority Calendar Contest. The theme was Earth Day, Protect Our Marine Life. Her artwork will be included in their calendar for 2020. She also won first place for the Horace Mann Community School in the Citywide Fire Prevention Poster Contest. The theme was Look, Listen, Learn, Be Aware, Fire Can Happen Anywhere. We wish to recognize the outstanding achievements, and that this Board of Education wishes its heartfelt congratulations to Parnika. Would you please come up? Nope, one more thing. And we have one more commendation. We usually recognize our, some of our retirees that happened to join us this evening. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Figu for a minute.
Good evening. On behalf of Central Office, I would like to take this time to recognize employees of the Bayonne School District who gave years of service to our children, our staff, and to our buildings, and have moved on and earned the title of retiree. We thank you for the years of service as well as your dedication to our district. When I call your name, please stand. Upon completion of announcing the retirees, we ask that you come forward for a photo opportunity. Retired teachers Donna Ponant Antice, 34 years of service; Rosemary Faciani, 33 years of service; Joanne Plantemura, 35 years of service; from our Repair and Transportation Department, Bruce Carrabino, Sr., 25 years of service; and from our Custodian Engineering Department, George Dieterding, 14 years of service. Please come forward for a photo opportunity.
Anyone here that we might have missed your name?
Congratulations.
Okay. At this time, if any of our retirees or any of our students would like to leave, you're welcome to. You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. I'll give you a chance if you'd like to leave. If not? I can't use the homework excuse, because we're done with homework. But, don't enjoy it. Sunny outside for a little while.
Five minutes.
For a little while. Okay, I will start with our consent agenda. First up is our Curriculum and Instruction. We have Resolutions A1 to A23. I'd like to make a note that A16 is going to be moved to non-consent. So Resolutions A1 to A23, A16 is being removed for non-consent. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
And do I have a second?
I will.
So I have a motion by trustee Velado, and a second by trustee Casillas. On that motion, and second trustee Alonzo is absent. Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Excuse me, yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz is absent. Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Next up, our Resolutions Finance, Building, and Grounds, Resolutions B1 through B12, and I'll remind the audience, all our resolutions are on our bulletin board. If you didn't have a chance to see them on the website? B12, no. So B1 through B12. Do I have a motion?
I motion.
Motion by trustee Ryan, and a second?
I'll second.
I believe it was second by President Broderick.
Second.
There you go. Second by President Broderick, who sits on our finance, well, he sits on all the committees. On that motion, and second trustee Alonzo is absent. Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz is absent. Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Next up, our Personnel Resolutions, C1 to C36. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by Vice President Willbeck, and a second?
I'll move.
Second by trustee Finerty. So on that motion, and second trustee Alonzo is absent. Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz is absent. Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Okay, that is our consent portion of the meeting. I will move on to non-consent. I do have two questions, but that's for later. Okay. I will read these into the record, starting with Resolution D1. Basically, Resolution D1 is whereas the Bayonne Board of Education is rescinding Resolution C43 that was passed at its June 3rd, 2019 meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by President Broderick, and a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Vice President Willbeck. So on that motion, and second trustee Alonzo is absent. Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz is absent. I'm sorry. Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Resolution D2. Whereas it's been determined that a vacancy exists in certain disciplines in the Bayonne Public School District, whereas the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Michael A. Wonko, has recommended the appointment of the below-named staff pending criminal history review, receipt of certification, be it resolved that pending fingerprint verification and receipt of certification, the below-name staff are hereby appointed at the salaries adjacent to their names and on the effective dates indicated. This is on our back bulletin board, Resolution D2. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by President Broderick, and a second?
I'll second a motion.
Second by Vice President Willbeck. So we have a motion and a second on Resolution D2. Trustee Alonzo is absent. Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Abstain.
Trustee Munoz is absent. Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Resolution D3. Whereas there's currently pending personnel matter between the Board of Education and Employee Number 8908, a teacher in the Bayonne School District. Whereas a proposed settlement agreement and release, and general release have been negotiated between Council for the Bayonne Board of Education and Employee 8908 that will fully resolve all outstanding issues and disputes between the parties. Whereas the proposed settlement agreement will avoid the significant expenditure of time and resources on the part of the Board, its administrators, and employees that would be necessary for the continuation of the pending matter. Whereas Employee 8908 has submitted a letter of resignation effective June 30th. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the settlement agreement and general release, authorizes the Board President to execute the written settlement agreement on behalf of the Board, be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the irrevocable resignation of Employee 8908 effective June 30th, 2019. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Motion by trustee Cruden, and a second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Casillas. On that motion, and second trustee Alonzo is absent. Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz is absent. Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Next up is the Resolution D4. I will read into the record, whereas the School Ethics Acts, NJSA 18A12-12, I'm sorry, 18A, colon, 12-21, was enacted by the New Jersey State Legislature to ensure and preserve public confidence in school board members and school administrators, and to provide specific ethical standards to guide their conduct. Whereas questions arose regarding how a Board should invoke the doctrine of necessity when a quorum of the Board of Education has conflicts of interest on a matter required to be voted upon. Whereas the School Ethics Commission provided guidance in Public Advisory Opinion A03-9 from April 1st, 1998, whereas the opinion set forth that when it is necessary for a Board to invoke the doctrine of necessity, the Board should state publicly that it is doing so, the reason that such an action is necessary, and the specific nature of the conflict of interest. Whereas the Commission, by resolution dated February 23rd, 2003, required a Board of Education invoking the doctrine of necessity to adopt the resolution setting forth that they are invoking the doctrine, the reason for so, the specific nature of the conflict. Whereas the Commission further directed Boards of Education that invoked the doctrine to read the resolution at a regularly scheduled public meeting, post it where it posts public notices for 30 days, and provide the Commission with a copy. Whereas the State Department of Education promulgated a regulation pursuant to NJSA 18A12-24 to address the standards and restrictions upon the ability of a Board member to vote on a particular issue. Whereas recent School Ethics Commission opinions were publicly released and apparently precludes any Board member from voting on a chief school administrator or superintendent if any relative may be employed by the district. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education is voting on the Actum/Interim Superintendent's Contract at its meeting on June 20th, 2019. Whereas there is no public body or forum that is statutorily empowered to act upon said Acting Interim Superintendent's Contract. Whereas four Board of Education members are conflicted, or potentially conflicted, from discussing and acting on the Superintendent's Contract due, that should be Acting Superintendent's Contract due to the following relationships. Ms. Casillas's brother is a custodian engineer employed by the district. Ms. Finerty's daughter is a teacher employed by the district. Mr. Ryan's wife is employed as an assistant principal with the district. Sister-in-law and sister are employed as school nurses. Sister-in-law is employed as a teacher. Sister-in-law is employed as a substitute teacher. Mr. Willbeck's wife is a teacher with the district. Whereas the inability of the aforementioned Board members to participate in a discussion and vote upon the Acting Interim Superintendent's Contract due to the aforementioned conflicts will result in a lack of a quorum necessary to approve the Acting Interim Superintendent's Contract. Whereas in order to address and vote upon the Acting Interim Superintendent's Contract, the Bayonne Board of Education hereby desires to invoke the doctrine of necessity in accordance with the procedures established by the Commission. Now therefore be it resolved that the aforementioned members, despite the potential conflicts, shall not be prohibited from participating in any vote upon the Acting Interim Superintendent Contract. Those Board members shall be entitled to explain the reasons for their vote to the public and respond to any questions from the public regarding their vote if they desire to do so. The Board of Education hereby invokes the doctrine of necessity in order to allow the full body of the Board to address and vote on the contract between the Board of Education and the Acting Interim Superintendent of Schools. This resolution shall be read at the regular meeting, the regular scheduled meeting of the Board and be posted on the website. A copy of this resolution shall be forwarded by Dr. Gary Maida to the School Ethics Commission. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by President Broderick, and is there a second?
I'll second a motion.
And I have a second by Vice President Willbeck. So on that motion, and second trustee Alonzo is absent. Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz is absent. Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
So by us doing resolution, I can now present Resolution D5. Whereas the Board of Education finds it necessary to make administrative appointments and reassignments to meet the current operating needs of the school district, therefore be it resolved that it is recommended by the Interim Superintendent of Schools that the below-name individual be assigned to the position listed next to their name, be it further resolved that this Board of Education approves the recommendations made by the Superintendent of Schools to assign the responsibility of Acting Superintendent of Schools to the individual listed below, in addition to that individual's regular assignment on the effective date indicated. And we will name Mr. Kenneth Kopas Acting Superintendent of Schools from July 1st, 2019 through August 14th, 2019. And there is no change in salary. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by President Broderick, and a second?
I'll second a motion.
Second by Vice President Willbeck. So on that motion, and second trustee Alonzo is absent. Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz is absent. Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Okay, I have one other resolution before the Board. This was A16, which we moved from curriculum. Bayonne Board of Education deems it necessary to provide Wilson Language Foundations Training for newly hired teachers in grade K1, I'm sorry, grades K and 1. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Velado, and a second?
I'll second.
By trustee Cruden. So on a move and a second for Resolution A16, trustee Alonzo is absent. Trustee Casillas?
I abstain.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz is absent. Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. President, that is all we have, but we do have two questions. How about Linda Taylor, 185 West 25th Street? Question on hockey. I remind the audience, you have three minutes.
Hi, Linda Taylor, 185 West 25th Street. I just am back, I know originally I was kind of promised the June 9th answer, but that was more for the Superintendent's position, so I was just following up on the appointment. I know that we had C4, which added five more coaches to the list of coaching, and just was curious where we stand with the hockey coach, head hockey coach, since we have three assistants named since July is rapidly approaching when typically the kickoff to the workouts, offseason workouts start.
Kopas?
I'm like, Ms. Taylor.
Good, thank you.
So we did advertise on the website, NJ School District. The posting is still up. We have it up on Frontline as well. We're looking for candidates and our athletic director and Bayonne High School principal will make the decision. I think that posting closes on July 13th. I did confirm with the Athletic Director, Dr. Pearson, that the assistant coaches would be handling those summer workouts that are allowed by the NJSIAA for hockey.
Okay. Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Joe Wyatt, 301 Maple Avenue, North Plainfield.
I recently watched, I recently watched the Chernobyl mini-series, and it created a great shift in my thinking. I've been trying to bring the truth out, okay? I've been trying to bring the truth out, okay? And I haven't succeeded. I've been ignored. I still have letters that have not been answered for two years or three years. And it shifted my thinking from trying to figure out what the truth is to what is the cost of our lies. And so in 1986, there were -- oh, by the way, if you can give me an extra three minutes, that would be nice, but if you're going to cut me off at three minutes, that's fine. I'll figure out a way to do it. When in 1986, there was the reactor number four, Chernobyl blew up, created one of the most horrendous disasters in the history of mankind. And so there was a man named Valery Legasov, who was the chief physicist, who was trying to -- he was in charge of the recovery and trying to figure out what to do with this great disaster. And so the Soviet government wanted to deny any responsibility for it, so they held a trial, and they tried to convince the jury that the people in the control room made a mistake and that was the problem. They were going to hang them for it. And Mr. Legasov blew the whistle. He pointed out that the fault was that there was a design fault in the reactor, and it was the fault of the Soviet government that they didn't bring that out. And so for that, he was confronted by the KBG, head of the KBG, who assured him that for his truthfulness, he would be erased. Not killed, but chillingly, he tells him that when you die, it will be exceedingly hard to discover whether you existed, ever existed or not. And in the end, they're driving him off, the KBG is driving him off to whatever exile he's going to go to, and this is the dialogue that goes on. "To be a scientist is to be naive. We are so focused on our search for the truth, we fail to consider how few actually want us to find it. But it is always there, whether we see it or not, whether we choose to or not. The truth doesn't care about our needs or our wants. It doesn't care about our governments, our ideologies, our religions. It will lie and wait for all time." And this at last is the gift of Chernobyl. Where I once would fear the cost of truth, I now only ask, what is the cost of lies? And for some context to that, previously in the trial, when he's describing how that it's the fault of the government, the court warns him that he is on dangerous ground. And he replies, "I have already tread on dangerous ground. We are on dangerous ground right now because of our secrets and our lies. They're practically what defines us. When the truth offends, we lie and lie until we can no longer remember it is even there, but it is still there. Every lie we tell incurs a debt to the truth. Sooner or later, that debt is paid, and you've already paid that debt by the financial crisis that we had and all the turmoil that that created, which was totally unnecessary."
Mr. Wyatt, I have three minutes and 43 seconds, so I think we'll let you wrap it up right now. Thank you. I'd like to turn the floor back over to Mr. Figu for a minute.
We did have two retirees come in after our photo opportunity, so we definitely want to recognize them and have them come up for their photo opportunity as well. Again, we want to thank them for their service to our children, our staff, and our buildings, and all the years of work they put in. First is Joanne Plante Murrow, please stand, 35 years of experience. Bruce Carabino Sr., 20 years.
Congratulations. Outstanding.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Bruce, congratulations. Great job. Good to be with you, baby. Have a seat here. Oh, yeah. Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Sit down, sit down, relax.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yes, absolutely. Have a seat, bye.
Okay, great.
At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting back over to President Broderick.
I got my glasses. Thank you. Sorry for that. As many of you might know, that tonight is the last night for our interim superintendent, Dr. Wonko's, meeting, and I just thought we'd like to say a few things about him. One was that he was truly, in my opinion, the right man for the right job at the right time. When he came in, we were under some big-time problems, and over the last two years, he truly took the vote by the horns and, you know, made the best of a very bad situation, implementing some new programs, which we're using right now, and we seem to be moving in a very good direction, and we're very proud of that. In fact, now that we have a new superintendent, in fact, if we didn't have a new superintendent, I was actually out looking for a pair of those glasses with the nose and the mustache and the hat and a big trench coat. We're going to call him Dr. Claude Rains, the invisible man. We're going to kind of keep him for another year if we possibly could. That joke didn't work very well either, so. But on my own behalf, I know I'm going to miss him, and personally, my biggest miss is that I think I'm going to miss a good friend. So, thank you, Dr. Wonko. And.
Thank you.
Anybody like to say something?
I think it needs to be driven home that when I got here, a little over three, almost three years ago, we were in a financial crisis. We had serious problems. If you want to know how good a job that Dr. Wonko did, at that point, the only thing we talked about at our meetings was money, how to save it. We're now in a position where if you look in the finance part of our agenda, there are two items where we have established surplus accounts. Additionally, when I got here, the hot committee was finance, had to be. It's now curriculum. We're establishing a new way of measuring our students with our multiple-tiered support system and our new report cards. That's how a board should be. We shouldn't, finance should be the backwater. Curriculum should be the point, the whole point of the exercise. We've achieved that. We're basically at the end. We're very close to the end of the financial crisis, and we can thank Dr. Wonko in no small measure for that, and I thank him for that.
I would just like to say, many interim superintendents come into positions and they really act as babysitters, you know, or they don't really do that much. They don't take on responsibility. Dr. Wonko was the exact opposite. He came in, he dove right in, he gave us his all, he did a wonderful job. I want to thank him so much, and we will miss him.
Doc, do you like to say a few words?
Yes. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Sixty-seven years ago, I began my journey with the Bayonne Public School System in this very room. I was a kindergarten student in Mrs. Garantina's class. This used to be a kindergarten room, and it was a number-three school annex at the time. So it's quite fitting that my official Bayonne Public School journey concludes in this very same space. It has been an exciting ride. I would like to thank everyone for their support during the past two years, but remember, it was a team effort, and I need to recognize a few individuals. First, my loving wife, Justine, for all her support over the years. She understood the time away from home to do this work properly. If I have achieved any success, I owe it to her. Second, a special thanks to the three men who were here with me from the beginning, providing me with advice and counsel. Mr. Kenny Copaz, Dr. Dennis Stegman, and Dr. Gary Maida. Also, my appreciation to Mr. Tom Figu, who stepped up into a difficult position. I would also like to thank Karen, Mrs. and Mary Ann for working hard every day, solving everyone's problems. And I wish the Cabinet, the leadership team, I know the change is not easy, however, they accepted the challenges and worked hard pushing that flywheel to help move our district a degree. Additionally, I thank our colleagues for an outstanding job education, educating our students. Special thank you to the Bayonne Board of Education for giving me the opportunity to work with you to make those changes that were necessary. See, I'm not president. Trump. Some of you might have seen that.
Yeah, I should have.
I'm in the same category with Mr. Broderick now.
I got it.
But again, the Board of Ed for giving me that opportunity to serve, especially President Broderick, who I'm sure will not miss all the calls that we have to make late at night. Yes, we had some challenging times, but we also had some great and fulfilling times. It's been an amazing educational journey over the past two years, and we have made an impact that I believe will last for years to come. Anyone in a leadership position hopes that when they leave the organization, it has become a little better than it was when they arrived. I hope history will show that was the case at my time at the Bayonne Public School District. Thank you for the opportunity to serve.
One thing I can say, if Dr. Wonko calls you after midnight, it's never good news. I can tell you that. All right.
Okay, I believe that's the only thing before the Board. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion.
Motion by trustee Cruden, second by trust Casias. So I have a motion and a second. Trustee Alonzo is absent. Trustee Casias?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz is absent. Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick is 816. The Board will not return.